Can someone get the door back there? Thank you. City Commission meeting for October 13th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Do we have anyone here tonight for the communication? John, would you do that? And I'm going to ask Commissioner Abraham to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I will.
Let's pray. Holy Father, I pray that you'll watch over this meeting tonight. I pray that you'll give everyone here that needs to make a decision, I pray you'll give them godly wisdom. I pray that you'll see us as righteous in your eyes. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
I move that a resolution entitled, a resolution of the... Well, if you insist. Okay, minutes. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the reading of the minutes for October 6, 2015, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved, is written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
I move that a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Making Declaration of Official Intent With Respect to Reimbursement of Temporary Advances Made for Capital Expenditures," be made from subsequent borrowing, be adopted.
Second.
Do I read all this?
No.
No, just, we can vote now.
Yes.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
It has your name on this. Did you want to say something, Jeff?
This is a resolution that, in anticipation of awarding a contract for the Riverfront Development Project, would provide for the expenses to become eligible for bonding.
Okay. You already voted.
For a portion of the expenses.
We go on to motions. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Deeds of conveyance, Robert Ray Smith for 800 South Fifth Street, Adam Moyers and Brandy Harless for 421 North Fifth Street, Commissioner's deed for 1420 North Eleventh Street, also known as 1100 Ellis Street, quick claim deeds, Michael Todd Knuckles for 2530, 2540, and 2546 Barnett Street, Jamie Santiago and Irma Rios for 2306 Yula Street, Miguel Pasqual Elias for 1006 South Eleventh Street, Reyes Cobb for 1009 Boyd Street. Contracts and agreements, construction contract with Mitchell Construction LLC for construction of a new home at 1606 Harrison Street, subordination agreement with Community Financial Services Bank for the redevelopment and revitalization of the Smedley-Eiser Building in the Lower Town Neighborhood, agreement with Stringfellow Inc. for the purchase of one regenerative street sweeper, agreement with McBride Mack Inc. for the purchase of one sidearm refuse truck, indemnification and license agreement with Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP for downtown hotel, memorandum of understanding with the Department of the Army for work performed prior to execution of a project, partnership agreement for Ohio River Shoreline Reconstruction Project, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for August 2015, bid for engineering public works department, Mack Construction Excavating Inc., and Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Upon the recommendation of City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order that personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, any questions?
No. Any questions for Steve?
Ready? Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving and Adopting the Comprehensive Health Insurance Benefit Plan Premiums for Calendar Year 2016, Including Premiums for Optional Dental and Vision Care for Employees of the City of Paducah," be adopted.
Second.
Sounds pretty good on the rights this year.
It does. You will see, it's that time of year, so we have a number of municipal orders and ordinances that we will introduce tonight, and then we will have one more municipal order that you will approve on the 27th. The bottom line to the employees and their families that are in our plan is the health plan premiums and vision premiums will be kept flat. There will be no increase in these days. That's as good as a raise in your pocket. For those employees that do elect dental insurance, we'll see approximately a 7% increase in those premiums, but dental insurance is in the $25 a month kind of range, so it doesn't end up being a big dollar amount. But for the employees that are... We have two health plans, the investor plan and the elite plan. We'll keep the out-of-pocket costs the same and the premium costs the same. And then, in two weeks, when we ask you to approve the spending credits, we'll ask you to approve at the same level as last year. Ordinarily, this time of year, you'd also see Greg Carlton, and Greg would come with a very in-depth PowerPoint presentation of where we stand and explain our plan to you. Greg unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. He had a funeral to attend out of state. To bring a little bit of context to our insurance plan, to remind you, we... The city utilizes what's called a partially self-insured plan, which is said is a mostly self-insured plan. We pay Anthem for certain services, and we'll see those come up tonight. We pay them to be our third-party administrator, so when an employee of ours presents their health card at the doctor, that actually goes to Anthem. Anthem processes the claim, importantly applies their discounts to it. So part of what we pay Anthem for is to process that claim, apply their discounts, and send us a check register every week and say, "How much money do you guys owe the doctors and the hospitals?" And then the City of Paducah pays that. We also pay Anthem to protect us, and that's called stop-loss insurance. Whenever a single person in our plan exceeds... Last year was $175,000. This year it'll be $175,000 as well. Then Anthem picks up the total cost past $175,000. And yes, we do have claims that get those big. As a big employer, you know, regrettably sadly every year we have cardiac cases, we have cancer cases. It happens to our employees, it happens to their families. But past $175,000, Anthem picks those up, so we pay a premium for that. And then there's an aggregate number that we pay for as well. So if nobody hits the 175, but a bunch of people hit $150,000, once we get past our aggregate, then Anthem kicks in at 100%. This year, we will pay Anthem approximately $544,000 for those fixed costs, for all the services and the stop-loss insurances. The rest of the plan, we will provide the dollars for. We are seeing and expecting next year a slight increase in medical costs. Both Anthem and our health service advisor, Peel and Holling, are predicting an increase. That comes from medical insurance. It comes from Anthem's and Peel and Holling's ability to analyze our data, our claims history at a high level, predict the relative health of the group, and predict costs for next year. And we're predicting an increase in those costs. Even though we are not predicting, or we're not recommending, an increase in our premiums that we charge, or a decrease in the spending credits that will give our employees... Part of our ability to do that and keep our costs flat is when you look back over the past several years. Over the past several years, we've had some good years mixed in with some not-so-good years. This year was okay. Last year was a little high, so when you look at our history, it's kind of sawtooth. We have a good year, we have a bad year. We have a good year, we have a bad year. But since we don't take profit, we just plow everything back into our health plan. Because of the way we manage our health plan, we're able to pass our savings on to our employees, but more importantly, absorb some of the losses that the plan does have, so we're able to keep it flat. This will be the third straight year. We're going to recommend no increases to the premiums and no decreases to the spending credits. And I think John said there were only... We've only had three increases in the last seven years. And nobody gets that these days, so we're happy for that. And a lot of that has to do with the way the city manages the cash portfolio of the plan. It's good management from the city manager on down to the health services group, to the finance department, that we're able to do that and pass that on to the employees. The first week of November, we will see our typical insurance information go out to the employees. Open enrollment this year will be most of the second week, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the second week of November.
Are we doing the flu vaccines this year?
We are doing the flu vaccines. You should have received an email today. It's at the end of the month. It's available for our employees or spouses and their children. It's three days at the end of the month, and it takes place in City Hall downstairs in the training room, and we provide that at no cost to our employees and their families.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Can I call the phone first, please?
Oh, yes, yes.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Application and All Documents Necessary for a State Farm Community Grant in the Amount of $5,000 for Development of Educational Material for the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Program by the Paducah Police Department, be adopted."
Second.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner, City Manager. We are here in front of you, asking for permission to apply. It is... We've been encouraged to do this, so we think we'll have some success with it. It is a Good Neighbor Citizenship Company Grant provided by the State Farm Companies Foundation. It supports three areas: safety, education, and community development. We are specifically pursuing this grant to push that money towards our Don't Be Intoxicated Program, which you all are familiar with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating There To with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for a 2015 Port Security Grant." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to obtain a 2015 Port Security Grant in the amount of $37,121 for the purchase and installation of equipment to extend video surveillance coverage of the flood wall and downtown infrastructure. Local matching funds are in the amount of $12,374.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Purchase of a Certain Tract of Real Estate Generally Located at 619 Sixth Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, from Paducah and Louisville Railway, for a public purpose." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to purchase a certain tract of real estate generally located at 619 Sixth Street, really, Paducah, Kentucky, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, for a public purpose from Paducah and Louisville Railway, a Kentucky corporation, for a purchase price of $295,000 and no cents.
Need a second.
Second, sorry.
I'm not very enthusiastic either.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 30 Civil Emergencies of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 30 Civil Emergencies of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, so as to bring this ordinance into compliance with the mandates imposed by KRS 65.870, as may be amended.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 126-72 Homeless Shelters of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 126, Section 72, Homeless Shelters of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, so as to bring this ordinance into compliance with the mandates imposed by KRS 65.870, as may be amended.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance says introduction. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Substitution of Capital Projects for Certain Projects Authorized to be Financed with the Proceeds of City of Paducah, Kentucky Taxable General Obligation Bond Series 2013B." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby declares that it is desirable and necessary to authorize, and the city hereby authorizes and directs the use of remaining unexpended proceeds of the 2013B bonds for the MACO project for capital and/or economic development projects, as may be set forth from time to time on city's CIP list or other ordinances, and as may be further directed by the Board of Commissioners or the City Manager.
Second.
John?
Mayor and Commissioner, you may recall back in September of '13, the city floated a $2.5 million bond issue, which we and the county built the Teletac building, and it was our intention to update the, well, it was going to be the MACO building. The MACO deal didn't happen, and so we had already borrowed the money, so we had the proceeds, and so what we're doing now is we're simply putting on the public record that the commission intends to use that money for other items, capital expenditures.
Is that all of it?
Yes, we have all of it. We never spent any of it. Not that... We borrowed, I think, it was $2.5 million, but we have $1.25 million from the MACO part of it.
Okay, so that's what's left?
Yes.
The MACO part of it.
The Teletac's already gone.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Proposal of Ratio Architects Incorporated for Two Architectural Design Service Options: Renovation and Rehabilitation to the Existing City Hall and Design Services for a New City Hall," and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah accepts the proposal of Ratio Architects Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,622,000 for two architectural design service options, renovation and rehabilitation of the existing city hall and design services for a new city hall, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
I'd like to take a step back a little bit and talk about how we've gotten to this point tonight, looking at procuring the professional services. In May of 2013, the City Commission had a budget workshop, and at that time, there was concerns about the existing city hall structure that was brought to your attention. In May of 2014, an assessment and conceptual planning study by Markham Engineering, Bacon Pharma Workman, Pec Flannery Grim Warren, was also presented to the City Commission. At that time, there was a conceptual opinion of cost for rehabilitation of existing city hall. July of 2014, there was a city hall values workshop, and at that workshop, we talked about image, customer experience, functional building and workspaces, sustainability, and siding impacts. Public comments on those values were solicited and received until September of 2014. If you remember, that was... A lot of that was done through information technology and PAM, through Facebook, and also just being submitted directly to the city. At the November 18, 2014, meeting, the public comments were summarized. The commission authorized at that time solicitation for design services for a new city hall in the civic center zone. In March of 2015, there was a presentation to the City Commission on site selection that was primarily staff-driven at that time. At that time, the City Commission narrowed the sites to three, and all those three sites were also located within the civic center zone. On May 10 of 2015, the city published a request for qualifications for architectural services for design of a new city hall. On May 12 of 2015, Mr. James Mason presented to the City Commission an alternative structural method. The City Commission at that time agreed to explore rehabilitation of the existing city hall and new construction, so that's where the dual path that we refer to started. On May 26, 2015, the City of Paducah received four proposals from qualified firms, all located here within Kentucky. The first is Ratio Architects, I'm sorry, they're out of Indianapolis, Branstad O'Carroll Incorporated, Murphy Graves and Tremble Incorporated, and RBS Design Group. All four of these firms were asked to present to the City Hall Advisory Committee on July 20th and 21st of this year. Each firm was asked also to present on their ability to produce conceptual plans for both the revitalization of the existing city hall and for a new city hall. The advisory group at this time is ready to make a recommendation to the commission that we hire Ratio Architects and that they be awarded the architectural services contract for the amount to not exceed $1.622 million. It should be noted that the Ratio team members include Pec Flannery Grim Warren, Bacon Pharma Workman, and Markham Engineering. The not-exceed amount represents the baseline approach of renovation and rehabilitation of the existing city hall. Lesser architectural service fees may become evident with an option of all-new building approach. The contract has been set up as a renovation and rehabilitation of the existing city hall as the baseline approach, since this approach represents a more comprehensive set of engineering and design services. The contract additionally includes the design of a new city hall building alternative for comparison to the baseline renovation rehabilitation approach. Both of those scenarios will be happening at the same time at the very beginning of this project. Once final consensus is achieved on the best design direction to pursue at the conclusion of schematic design, new or renovation of the existing city hall, the existing contract would either continue for rehabilitation, as it's written now, or the existing contract would be amended through a change order to reflect design fees for new construction. The services provided, programming will include current governmental departments and possibly information technology offices, IT, credit union police, and 911 essential services will not be part of program scope. Functional changes to the existing site, landscaping, site lighting, signage, et cetera, will be reviewed. Also, construction documents and probable costs are all part of that design fee. Under new build, the new build design option will run concurrent with the baseline rehabilitation approach. Deliverables will include programming, interior floor plans, elevation, 3D renderings, site plans, and projected costs. I believe also there's computer ramination, which I don't have up there, but which will also be included in that. These deliverables will assist the commission in coming to a consensus on a new build or rehabilitation of the existing city hall. Workshops will be held for this decision-making process. Upon selection of the project path, whether that be rehab or new construction, the City of Paducah may have to procure professional services for F, F, and E, audiovisual design, and security evaluation. At this time, we have not included them in the base scope of services because we're not sure exactly which direction we're going at this point. A site selection effort will resume. If you remember, within the last year, staff-driven site selection, we narrowed it down to three. Ratio will assist us in finalizing the review of optional sites to accommodate a new city hall. The process will evaluate the pros and cons in order to reduce the list of preferred sites from the current three sites to one site. The site design process will investigate a long-term master plan for the existing Dollymane Plaza in conjunction with site selection. Looking at the schedule, programming site selection and Dollymane Plaza, after contract signing, we're looking through Week 4. Schematic design for both options will take us out through Week 11. Design development, a final option, will be through Week 20. Construction documents, an additional 14, Week 21 through Week 35. Bidding and negotiations, Week 39, of course, plus and minus on both sides of these weeks, of course. Construction starting Week 40 and lasting plus or minus 17 months. The schedule that they have, which is a pretty aggressive schedule, looks at starting in early of 2018. Public participation will be facilitated through various stages of the planning and design process. It should be noted, under pre-schematic interest of parties, we'll have the opportunity to meet with design professionals to discuss programming and related pre-schematic design issues, and those could include building systems, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, exterior finishes, as well as the building site. And I think most of the advisory committee is here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you go back to that contract options slide?
Please, let me... You mean the additional services?
What's included in the contract?
Yes.
I guess, can you explain that more? So they're going to do a total study of renovation, a total study of a new build?
Right.
Side by side, taking us to what part through the project's schedule, where we're either ready to do renovation or we're ready to build? And would this contract include what a new building would include and look like?
The baseline approach, which is the rehabilitation of the existing city hall, is that number that you see that this contract is for. If, after we've gone through the process of looking at new construction or rehab, a decision's made, for instance, let's say, build new, then that existing contract would be looked at and most likely revised, depending upon the programming and the size of structure we actually need. Within the document that you received, you saw the different percentages that this contract is based upon, based upon newer rehab, for instance, new construction at 7.25%. So if the new build was smaller, that number could come down, and the contract would be amended.
So all along, there'll be studying, renovating, what it's going to cost for that? Is that a total renovation at one time, or will it be looked at where it could be phased in, do multiple years of renovation?
There's a probable cost given to the commission on rehabilitation of the existing structure, complete.
One complete project.
That's correct.
As far as the community involvement, you said there will be public engagement. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, and we're very early within this process. One of the first things we'll do is sit down with our architects and kind of start talking about some of the things that I have on the board. But one of the things we want to do before we get very deep into the programming and schematic design is to give an opportunity to the interested parties within the community to come forward and talk about... to come forward and talk about what they see or what they vision, as whether it be new build or rehabilitation of the existing structure. So we're planning on doing that real early, not after schematic design.
Well, I mean, I know the Growth, Inc. Board has been very involved in trying to talk to us about renovation. They had brought in the James Mason to talk about how we could just stabilize the canopy. So do you foresee opportunity for them to be involved with them on this?
Yeah, and this last slide that I had, that's exactly what I was referring to, is really allowing that type of public input before schematic design. In other words, before an architect would actually bring plans out for people to look at and make comments on, it would bring them in a little bit earlier in to talk about what they see as far as rehab or new construction. So yes, is your answer to that.
Was not really a question, it's just a comment. I mean, it just pains me to have to spend money on City Hall. I don't feel like that's anything that's going to help bring people to Paducah, to move here, to have activities here, for amenities for the community. I mean, I know we have to look at both ways, I guess, to figure out, it wouldn't be fair, really, to the taxpayers to choose just one over the other without knowing the cost comparison. But it's still, it just really, I feel like Commissioner Rhodes, it's really heartburn to have to spend money right now on City Hall, and I feel like there are so many other needs that we should be spending it on.
Yes, ma'am.
I get it.
So, Commissioner Wilson's question also about Growth, will they be the only ones, or will other people be allowed to? I mean, where does, where does that come into play? With who gets to do input?
As I'd mentioned, one of the first things that we'll do is actually sit down with the architect and come up with a strategy on what we think is the best path forward for public participation. I would imagine if we allow Growth to come and speak, we would allow other parties to also.
Okay. So when you put this out for bid, this was the, I'm sure, I'm just reiterating probably what you said, refocusing on it, but this is the best bid to do the two options? And this, you felt like this company brought forth the best opportunity to do a side-by-side comparison?
I can speak to that. Both Commissioner Rhodes and I sat in on that committee, and yes, no question. There were great proposals, but this seemed to answer all the questions. They had a lot, they talked a lot about public input. They've done a lot of public buildings, they've done preservation projects, they've gotten a lot of new build experience. They were very well-prepared. They were head and shoulders above the rest, frankly. Would you not agree?
It was a unanimous vote.
It was a unanimous vote. And I totally understand exactly what you're saying. It pains me as well, but as we started down the path of new construction, and we're not hearing, you know as well as I, we had so many constituents that were coming forward, talking about saving this building, the petitions started going around, and it would be an injustice to the taxpayers not to look at both and compare the cost and understand exactly what it would, to stabilize this building, what our space analysis are, all those things, and to look at that and weigh both. And this is really the only way that we're going to get the answers that we need.
And we really feel like we have to do something. I mean, obviously, we've got all the entrances closed, except the one because of the canopy. So there's, I guess, we feel like we can't wait on moving forward with something with City Hall.
There's no question about that.
We're actually about two and a half years since we first...
What was the word that the architect used when they made their presentation, that the canopy is depleting?
And you can see that.
And he clarified that, to mean it's falling down?
Well, I mean, you can see this falling. As you come underneath, you can look up, you see it, you can see it. And that's just one of several other items. We have some seismic...
Well, I mean, all the systems in this building are original and, for the most part, have not been reinvested in, quite frankly, have run a period of time perhaps beyond their projected life, but it's a 50-year-plus-old building, and that's a fact of the matter. So I think the decision to look at it comprehensively was driven in part by the age of the building, the fact that really none of the systems had been upgraded during that time. All aspects of it are that old, so.
So at this point, really, I mean, just to put money into stabilizing the canopy or just piecemealing it, would not necessarily, would not be good spending of our money either, because we don't know that long-term this is...
Well, you could, for example, just to illustrate that, clearly, probably the priority number one is that, the stabilization, because of the, as one of the consultants said, Commissioner Abraham, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, you know, certain things, I think, reference the canopy in particular. But, for example, if that's all we did, then we would left unaddressed the gap between the energy consumption in this building as it's currently designed and the condition of it, and what's achievable through reinvestment, which we believe is quite significant, as one example.
And another example that really got my attention is there are certain things that if you choose to do to this building, the staff is going to have to move out, they're going to have to be displaced for a while. Well, if you start to piecemeal it, and you look at that cost, it just doesn't make sense. When you ask them to move and all the expense that comes into play with that, it just didn't make sense.
So you all looked at all that during your thorough study with the consultants?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So on that committee, I know both of y'all served on that.
In addition to that, Steve Doolittle, Rick Murphy, Steve Irvin, and myself, so it was a good, good group, I think, a lot of expertise, a lot of background, a lot of perspective, and want to in particular thank Commissioners Galton and Rhodes for their time participating.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your time on it. That's why I want to ask you those questions, because you served on it, trust your decisions? You feel like, you know, this is the best opportunity, best options?
And we're doing exactly what we said we would do once the citizens wanted to look at what would it take to rehab, what, all that process, what's that included? And it looks like with this firm, they're going to do that. This is what it is. If we rehab, this is what it is if we go new. So I think that's appropriate at this point.
I mean, I know we just can't turn our back on it, but still, I just have to say, it just pains me to think of this kind of expenditure.
It's a big house.
It probably should have. I mean, I don't know if the maintenance through the years has caused some of this to happen, or it's the design of the building, that's what I'm saying, the lack of it, or the design of the building.
Again, I just want to clarify, the systems, the HVAC systems, I think, in fact, it's a credit to the maintenance of them, operational maintenance over the years that they've lasted as long as they have. But there's a useful life to everything. And again, that particular system, by way of example, is 1960s technology in terms of energy efficiency and other benefits of modern design.
And just plain talk, we're the group that's up. I mean, so I mean, it was going to, it was going to happen sooner or later, someone's going to have to address what's going on.
You drew the short, we're the ones that's up now.
I mean, yeah.
It's that falling to now, to this decision?
Well, think about it, you know, in our national government, we always criticize Congress for kicking things down the road. Well, guess what?
We're not.
We're not. And maybe it's not very painful, not very happy, but we're doing what we're supposed to do, one way or the other.
And you know, 50 years is a good barometer for neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are good for about 50 years before they go into a decline. My body's pretty good. It goes into a decline. No, so in 50 years, we're going to have to do something. All right. Did you, did you second that?
I did.
Good for you.
That's a pretty good example, yeah.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the rates for stop-loss insurance coverage with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the 2016 calendar year, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the rates offered through Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance coverage for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Effective January 1, 2016, the stop-loss rates are as follows. Individual stop-loss, $175,000, maximum city liability per person, with a monthly cost of $111.58 per member. An aggregate stop-loss, $2,738,364.60, maximum city liability of total claims combined, with a monthly cost of $6.48 per member. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the stop-loss coverage.
Second.
Steve.
I think I've pretty much covered all this with the municipal order. These next, this ordinance and the next two are all related, the administrative fees, the stop-loss, the one you're acting on right now, and the last one will be the Peel and Holland contract.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as the city's third-party administrator to provide claims administrative services related to the city's health plan, health insurance plan. The effective date of this agreement is January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Second. Okay. Just can't say anything else, can you?
I can. Fiscal years start in July, but unfortunately, all health plans start in January. So our health plan spans two fiscal years, and to make it further complicated, our wellness year starts in October and goes through the end of September. So three years we typically deal with when we talk about health insurance.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
What about mine?
Oh. Are you next?
I am.
Okay. Commissioner Gal, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for a strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Peel and Holland Financial Group for administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby ratifies the execution of a contract for a strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Peel and Holland Financial Group in the amount of $76,900 payable in four equal installments of $19,225 each for administration services pertaining to the administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or the city's legal counsel for issues that arise in connection with the employer and employee bargaining, legal matters, disputes, or other similar issues. This contract is for the 2016 calendar year.
They are asking for an increase this year. This is the first increase to this service in three months, or in the last three years. We rely on Peel and Holland for almost everything. They meet monthly, not just Greg Carlton, but always Rhonda Burks, and usually one other staff person from Peel and Holland comes to meet monthly with the entire HR department, as well as John Perkins and Audrey Herndon from Finance. We do that on a monthly, ongoing basis. We take claims problems, we have all the negotiation that goes on with Anthem. These rates with Anthem that you approved tonight were rolled out to us initially much higher. It was Peel and Holland that helps us with that negotiation to say, we have the same claims data you do, we're analyzing it this way. And I don't know if they saved their entire fee for us, but they certainly more than saved the increase that they're asking for next year. And they run all of our wellness stuff as well, so Peel and Holland runs a very, from soup to nuts on this with us.
So just, we give our, the data, we give our data to Peel and Holland, and then they do what with it? And this is just for folks that may not quite understand how that process works. And then what do they do with it?
Analyze it. Every time somebody in our plan procures a health service, there's a tremendous amount of data generated with it. Not only who they went to, but what price they paid, did they access the network, did they not access the network? Did they buy drugs? Where did they buy drugs? We analyze the usage of those drugs, and then we formulate our plan based on basically how our employees use our services, and we use that information to decide what future, what our current future premiums we're going to charge, and what spending allocations we're going to give to our employees. We also use it, the city, it's our basis for our financial planning. Just allowing Anthem to have our information, they have our information because they see our bills, right? Every time our employees swipe their card. But Peel and Holland uses the very same information to do, to do this thing that happened very expensively to us this year. There was, there was talk of Anthem lasering out some of our employees. Lasering out is an industry term that means, we're not going to cover you. Period. And we know these claims will be in the seven figures. Peel and Holland was able to go to them, explain to them how much money they really did mean to us, and that these employees shouldn't be lasered out of our plan, meaning that the specific and aggregate stop losses should, should apply to those employees that have very serious health issues that run well into the seven figures. So on, I'm not sure we could do that by ourselves, Commissioner. There's a level of industry expertise there that Peel and Holland uses our data to go to, to go to negotiation table with them, and they can do it in a way that we simply cannot. They also bring to us this, and I see it all the time, we're not Peel and Holland's only client. I have clients from, from here to the middle part of the state, and they, and they are constantly sizing and comparing experiences they've had with other clients, both private and municipal clients, governmental clients, to say, here's some lessons we learned in Owensboro, or here, and here's how we maybe can do things better here. They've also been very instrumental with us this year in ACA compliance. While we were largely ACA compliant, because we were a group larger than 50, and we did already offer health insurance, it's the reporting. We've never had to do reporting before because we just, we just provided it. Well, the reporting is a, is a large, complicated animal, and we've been working on that with Peel and Holland. I think we started in, where's John, February, John left, February or March, just so that come this January, when we have to report to the federal government about our compliance, very complicated issue. You think we could just say, this is how many employees we have, full-time ones, and how many we give coverage to, but we have to track it on a, on a per-person basis compared to how many hours they worked, and how many dependents are covered as well? So there's a tremendous amount of, of reporting that has to be done, and they're assisting us with that.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I find it fascinating, Pammy, did you do this? Why is it that my favorite project?
Let me get it.
No, I wouldn't.
Andrew read it.
Oh, no, I'll read it, it's just, we'll get this in a second. I think I've been...
I will next week.
Yeah, boy.
I'm glad I spent money on it.
All right. Believe it or not, I'm going to read this. "I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Mac Construction and Excavating Incorporated, utilizing the first deductive alternative for construction of the riverfront development project Phase 1B, gangway, transient dock, and landmass, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same." This ordinance, if I faint, catch me, this fort ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Mac Construction and Excavating Incorporated for the 2016 calendar Mac Construction and Excavating Incorporated, utilizing the first deductive alternative in the total amount of $8,113,110.42 for the construction of the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Way to go. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Mayor Commission, this is an introduction for you all. The bids were open on September the 9th. Your staff, city manager, myself, Steve, a lot of folks have worked on this to bring you a recommendation, and this is the best recommendation we can put before you this evening.
Steve, I noticed you did take some of the footage on the transient boat dock out.
Sixty feet.
So I didn't talk to any of the PRDA members about that. Do you, did you have an opportunity to do that before this was?
Well, Commissioner, we haven't met since then, but that was part of the original cost-reduction strategy that they recommended in the report they made to the commission last year.
So you feel like they're going to be okay with that?
I do.
So the total bid, the top number is without any deductions, that's with the 400 feet, correct? And the alternative number one is with 60 feet removed?
The total bid is $8,353,888. And with the first deduct or the first alternate removed, the amount would be $8,113,110.42.
Two hundred and forty thousand, seven eighty-eight.
That was the deduct.
Leaving approximately $3 million to be bonded with the deduct.
We'll vote on that next week.
When we think about the, and I'm sorry to bring this up, but when we think about the marina, or the.
It's not a marina.
Well, the fuel servicing, the power pole, the sewer, and the pot of water. If we.
Transient boat dock.
Transient boat dock, okay, fine. Well, again, the fuel, the water, the sewer, and the power. So do we have, we have sort of a business plan started on this about how we're going to, you know, how we're going to mitigate the costs, how we're going to charge, and what we think in anticipation of getting this thing started, you know, how we're going to staff it, all those, do we have some idea, are we beginning to think about it?
The way we plan on this, Commissioner, is obviously you can't staff it. A lot of other communities have these facilities. There's a phone number to call to get services turned on for the pedestals that will be there. We plan on using that. We plan on having credit cards, that you can run your credit card and get fuel, but somebody has to come down and unlock, unlock the fuel systems for that. That's the way we intend on running it. A lot of them run through their park services department. You know, if you pull into a transient boat dock, there's a little sign there, a little number there that says, hey, call this number, somebody will be down to help you.
Okay, so it's not purely just self-service?
No.
We also expect that there could very well be a fee just for dockage. We've noticed in most of the communities we've looked at, if you pull up to their transient dock, there's a charge based on the length of the boat, and a truck ranger comes by and collects your payment for your length of stay.
PRDA looked at that, and they were fine with that. They felt like that that was very sufficient for handling it.
All right, I'm going to, I'll give you a curveball. I'm sorry. So my boat attaches to the city dock, transient, to the city transient boat dock. And I've got my power hooked in, and I've done, I'm taking care of all the amenities, and I'm paying the fee. So what happens when I break out a craft beer, glass of wine, and sit on my boat, and I'm attached to, is that going to be a problem? Because I noticed in either Chattanooga or Nashville, you can't do that. It's against the law. I just wonder if we thought about that?
I don't, we haven't thought what happens if someone drinks.
Someone breaks the law while they're at the transient boat dock, I mean.
I'm sorry.
I've not thought through it that far.
All right.
So speeding.
So I'm going to read my, I'm going to read my objection one time, Mayor, and I can do this tonight, or next Tuesday. Your choice.
Just hit us with it.
Hit us with it, then next Tuesday, I'm going to be.
Give us a break.
I'll be, I'll give you a break. I will not say a word other than, all things seem to come in threes. For me, that means next Tuesday, a week from tonight, I'll get to vote against the Schultz Park for the third time. A couple of numbers on the projects. Right now, the city and the federal grants are into this for $3 million apiece. Next Tuesday, we'll vote for another $3 million to pretty much finish the park. Combined with the federal grants, we will have $14 million in the park, a truly breathtaking sum. Number two, in the last five years, the average number of boats through Kentucky and Barclay were 698 pleasure boat, those are actually what we call trips. They went somewhere, nobody knows, maybe some came to Paducah, I don't know, but 698 in a year came through. So all I'm saying is, is that I'm sorry. For me, I can't vote for it. I don't see how we spend so much money to finish this transient boat dock.
It's a park.
It's a park, well.
And then the other park will be substantial, too.
It is. And I would vote to do the other park. So I will be quiet now, and we'll go on.
Well, I will say that the response I've received has been to go for it.
Absolutely, that's what I've heard, too. As a matter of fact, I've been surprised at the numbers of people that have called to say that.
Well, maybe I'll have a huge backlash, be out of office, and then I'll be a happy camper, I'll be back in private life. I don't know.
Oh, you do yourself a disservice, Alan.
It's just, just the way I feel. But it's okay. We'll get along, and we'll make better decisions by having disagreements and conversations.
Any other comments?
I think it's been a long time coming, I'm ready for it.
I'm ready to get.
I'm going to be here next Tuesday night. So I hate that for three years I've been wanting to vote on the Riverfront project, and I'm not going to be here next week, but.
Can you vote by proxy?
Can I vote by proxy?
It'll be nice to get it over with.
So I would just like to say that we're all sorry at the passing of longtime fire chief Leon Dodge. You know, he was, he was one of our favorite people, I think, and he, you know, he worked so hard for the veterans, and that's what I especially remember him as more, to me, more than being the fire chief, because I wasn't in the city work as much at that time. But I remember his passion for the veterans, and so I'll always remember him for that.
And the retirees.
Yes, and for him to be on the beach at D-Day, and to be one of the survivors.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
That's really something. So his service and funeral is tomorrow. So I just want to remember his family. Any other comments?
Monday, 11 o'clock, groundbreaking at the hotel.
Yeah, shouldn't forget that.
I don't do, that's another good.
Any public comments?
Any public?
Meeting's adjourned.